I call this special meeting and workshop of the Uvalde Consolidated Infinite School District Board of Trustees to order. Let the record show that a form of board members is present with the absence of trustee Suarez. That this meeting has been duly called and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Opens Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Please bow your head for a moment of silence twenty for 21 seconds to honor our 21 beautiful souls. Thank you. Our invocation tonight will be led by Travis Johnson with United Methodist Church.
It's power heads. Lord, we know that your heart is for little children. And so we ask that as the school board goes about the business of educating and providing for and caring for the children in our community, Lord, we ask that you would give them wisdom and guidance and discernment. Lord, and just just bless the the children and the teachers and and all those who are involved in this work of of educating and caring for the children of our community, Lord. We love you and we ask this in your name. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Please join me in the pledges to our flag.
The United States of America and two republics for which it stands, one nation under God, one and
May be seated. Thank you. Item two is open forum. We have no one signed up. Item three, information, item of information on grade audit, energy services contract Superintendent Colas.
Thank you, President Lambert. At this time, I'd like to call up Ms. Bendley for a presentation to the board regarding Snyder Electric.
Good afternoon. So tonight, I know we started this process, oh, probably over a year ago that the board approved Snyder Electric to do an investment grade audit. So Mr. Garcia is here present tonight to kind of go over the results of that and also with what they are suggesting that we focus on next. And then we have Ryan. I believe that is joining us remotely. So I asked Mr. Gonzalez Garcia, sorry, to come up and do the presentation.
Good evening, Board President, Ms. Colas. Thank you for having us today. And as Ms. Bendley was mentioning, my name's Aaron Garcia. I'm with Schneider Electric. And on the on virtual today, we have Ryan Wonder. He's our project development manager engineer for our company that was assigned to this project. And as Ms. Mendley mentioned over a little over a year ago, we were contracted to come in and look at the district to to identify areas that we can come in and improve make improvements. Mainly focused on a lot of the mechanical air conditioning equipment, building automation controls and looking at additional ways maybe to help the district to be more energy efficient. We've been a partner with the district for at least 15 plus years. I've been with the company for 14 years now. And when I first started that we we were performing a project back 14 years ago, it was another under another account manager that was handling this project at that time. So what we'd like to do today is go through the the findings that we had through the audit. We we call it an investment grade audit, but basically it's the design phase. We put together a design and engineering plan for for the district. Kind of a short term, long term opportunity that you have here. Of course, we're we were taking everything based on budgets and what you're able to do currently. So we're going to make some recommendations this evening on for for y'all to bring back on your May 19th and to move maybe forward into the construction phase. So basically, we've completed the design phase. We'll go over that tonight. And and then we'll we'll look at hopefully get this approved to get into the construction phase for in the next meeting that shall bring this up in. Some of the goals that we had was of course that that we understood and were in line with the district was to help modernize the school buildings to help provide a future ready campus and to provide a safe environment conducive to the learning environment. We wanted to reduce also deferred maintenance and operational cost. That was another focus of the design that we came we put together. We also wanted to maximize utility savings to help fund and help pay for the project as well. So we'll get into that shortly on how that's how some of the savings that we've identified is going to help fund the project. And then we also wanted to make sure we addressed all the HVAC issues throughout the district. The reason we've taken, it's been a little over a year. We also, one of the other areas of focus that we had was to identify any opportunities for grants grants that were out there. And there was a couple that were out there that we helped the district. Actually, we focused on one. It was the EPA Community Community Change Grant. And the district put a lot of effort. We put a lot of effort into the application of that grant. Unfortunately, it was very competitive. It was a nationwide grant. And we weren't able to get it this round, but if it comes back another round, we'll we'll be better prepared and hopefully get get approved. As Ryan visits and presents shortly, you'll be able to see that there's quite a bit of needs throughout the district that this particular grant or or any grant that we can help identify and get awarded would definitely help be able to fund fund some of the projects needed. So this next page here that we're going to talk about the opportunities page covers the mechanical, which is the air conditioning talks. We're going to talk about the controls, which is the air can the thermostats throughout the district and which is a building automation system to more advanced than just T stats. And then talk about some lighting opportunities that need to be done. The electrical, there's quite a bit of electrical upgrades that need to be done throughout the district. That's district. And a lot of these things that we're talking about today, they're just, we work with many school districts. I'm working on a project right down the road from here with San Felipe del Rio. They were doing quite a bit of the same type of scope that we were recommending. A lot of your older schools have have grown capacity. The electronics, computers, things like that have 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 caused a need for additional electrical equipment throughout the district as well. So that's that's something that will need to be focused in the near future. The building envelope covers like your 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 seals, windows, the roofing. There's there's opportunities there that the district needs to be that needs to look, they'll need to look at in the near futures. And then we're going to talk about a couple of other services that we provide. So I'm going to let Ryan, Ryan, are you there? Can you hear us? And we let's test to see if you're, we can hear you.
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you if you could just speak up a little louder.
All right. How about that? Is that better?
Try a little bit, a little bit louder if possible.
All right. One last time. What do you think?
Okay, that's a little clearer.
Little more clear. Okay. Well, thank you for that, Aaron. And good afternoon, good evening, everyone. We'll go to this next slide here and talk a little bit about the scope of work that we focused on for this preliminary phase of the project. We focused on the building automation system. We've got some details here that describe some of the issues the district is dealing with. We've got control systems that are made by multiple vendors and these systems are quite old. These systems are, some of them are 20 years and older and parts are not readily available. So they're really the district's done a great job of keeping these systems running, but they're at a critical point now. So this is a very high priority for the district. We've got some pictures of some of the older on the right. Can you hear me?
Ryan, can you hold on one second? They're going to try to raise the volume in here.
Okay.
Right, try saying something now, Ryan.
Yeah, let me know. Is this is this better?
Little bit.
Little bit better?
You can just try to speak up a little louder. That that would help.
Okay, all right. So the goal here is to upgrade and replace these systems. These systems are critical because number one energy using item in the school buildings is the air conditioning equipment. Go ahead. And the air conditioning equipment is managed with these control systems, these building automation systems. So the the single most important thing to reducing the utility bill and managing the utility bill for the district is this control system. So this is why it's such a high priority. If we go to the next slide, we'll see the second item that we paired up with the building automation system is the LED lighting. And so this is something that I think everybody's familiar with. This is an excellent energy savings item. It it brings a quicker payback to help pay for the control system. And it also has the added benefits of improving the aesthetics on the inside and the outside of the buildings. And furthermore,
Hey, Ryan, Ryan. Let's go back a page to the controls because we we were able to get the the speakers running better now. So we were, it was a hard, it was very hard understanding you earlier on the building automation. So if you could just start over.
Yeah, no problem. Is this this sounds good now?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Much better.
So the building automation system is a top priority because the air conditioning equipment in the buildings is the number one consumer of energy. And so in order to manage that equipment and to make sure that it's being used properly and not running after hours when nobody's at the in the buildings is a top priority. And that's why we focus on the building automation more than anything else. It's the number one thing to protect and keep the utility bills low. So we couple that high priority with these systems that are in the buildings now that are literally 20 years old. They're failing. Parts are unavailable. This is a high priority for the district. And so we've put this as a priority number one. If we go to that next slide with the LED lighting, we've we've paired that building automation system with the LED lighting. And these two items make a great project. The LED lighting has excellent energy savings. It makes for a significant improvement in the aesthetics inside and outside of the buildings. And then furthermore, it all but eliminates the maintenance of the lighting that's happening now with ballasts and glass tubes. These are a thing of the past with LED lights. So the LED lighting projects are a key part of all of our projects. These two projects together, the controls and the lighting bring the maximum amount of savings to the district to pay for this project. Additionally, it's worth noting at the bottom on the right there, there's a significant utility rebate from AEP for this lighting project as well. We're targeting about $30,000 for that rebate. Next page. So this project, it brings a 17% reduction on energy costs. So that's very significant. The average annual savings of just under $200,000 per year. And then, of course, over 20 years, we're talking about $4 million. And that is, we talked about that one time rebate with from AEP. And then the the total project costs are also right at about $4 million. So substantially, this is what we call a self funding project. In other words, the savings pay for the improvements, the savings from the LED lighting and from the control system. Then at the bottom of this page, we've got a summary of the scope of work. The idea is that the lighting would be very comprehensive and district wide. Basically, we want to see all of the lights the district has retrofitted and included in this project. And the controls is focused on almost all of the buildings with the exception of Flores Elementary. All right, next slide. So when we think about work that was evaluated and we're talking about for a future phase, we're talking about the HVAC mechanical, that is the HVAC equipment, the electrical improvements in the buildings and then building envelope and then smart metering and some of the other things. So these are very important things for the district, but these are a lower savings item and higher cost. So the this first phase project, it makes sense to pair up these higher saving items. And these items will be there's still a need and this will be work that we would propose in a future phase of work. Next slide. Just a couple of points on the air conditioning equipment. There's still a lot of HVAC equipment that has R22 refrigerant around the around the district. Of course, this refrigerant has got to be quite expensive. It was phased out in 2010. And this is true for basically all of the campuses have a an addition from the year 1999 or 2000. So that equipment, even though those are some of the newer additions to the schools, that equipment is now 25 years old. So a lot of equipment needs to be changed out in those areas. Like I said, the district's done a great job of keeping that equipment running. But when we talk about 25 years for air conditioning equipment, that's pretty much the end of life, if not just a little past. And then obviously, a lot of benefits come from air conditioning equipment, the the number one thing, of course, being the comfort in the building, but it does bring energy savings. It does bring operations and maintenance savings. Next slide. The electrical infrastructure is something that's kind of often overlooked. We've got a few pictures here and there's quite a few areas around the district where the electrical is quite dated and needs attention. So this is like, this is sometimes behind scenes or behind locked doors. But when this equipment has problems, it can be quite significant and it can be, it can really put you, put the buildings out of service for a long time. A lot of this equipment is well past. It's so well past its expected life. We typically want to say electrical gear is good for 35 years. A lot of this equipment is much older than that. And so there's significant need for electrical renovations. Obviously, the main thing there is safety and reliability. Going to that next slide. Capital asset planning is something that we recommend for our customers. And this is just really exactly what it sounds like. It's an asset planning software that allows a district to keep records and maintain equipment. It's really designed around the HVAC equipment. But it can be used for just about anything. It can be used for fleet maintenance or any type of equipment, computers or desks or anything. The idea is it will keep detailed records on the air conditioning equipment. And the district will be able to go in and look at that equipment and see year by year when equipment is expected to need to be replaced and begin to budget for those things. So it's 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 even more encompassing, but the idea is to keep a strong inventory of all that equipment, but then also use that data to start doing analysis for budgeting. All right, the next slide. You're right. Turn it back over to Aaron here.
Thank you, Ryan. So this next page is just a snapshot of of some of the history that we have, past performance that we have with other districts. I think we might have a couple of cities and counties and that list of clients. We've been Schneider's been around over 100 years in existence. And as I mentioned earlier, we've been a partner for the district for over 15 years. But most of you are probably have not been here that long to to know that. But we've done at least four projects here for the district. And we've got several projects nationwide that we've done multiple projects for the for the districts as well. Next slide, please. So this this next page is just a snapshot of the milestones that we've had with the district. We've presented early April to the staff this information, but we've been working for many months and have met many, many times to discuss the scope of the work and trying to come up with a a good plan for the district. The we're presenting this information today to the board. May 19th, Pam is looking at bringing this back for approval along with currently, the other two items that are being reviewed right now is the legal review. That's that hopefully will be done by May 19th. If not, then we'll have that pending. The the important thing for the district is is that this this type of project has to be reviewed by a third party engineer to confirm that the the scope of the work, the savings that we're that we're guaranteed are going to happen with performing this work are going to happen. So that's being reviewed right now as well by a third party engineer. And by May 19th, you should have a stamp of approval from this engineer that will either say that should say that this project meets meets that goal. We're looking at June for construction kickoff to begin the construction phase of this. And then early sometime in May of 2026, we we should be completed with the project. So at at this, at this moment, I'll go ahead and open it up to any questions that y'all might have.
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I didn't see anything in there. Did they happen to look at maintenance cost savings, maintenance on what we have now versus the new stuff?
I think it's on the Ryan, do you have that information, the maintenance and operational cost savings? I don't see it on the I think you bundled it together on that on that financial impact page.
I think you're right. We we definitely consider the operations and maintenance savings because that is a significant benefit that is a part of these projects, especially when we talk about lighting. You know, we talked about right now, most of the lighting in the district is done with T8 fluorescent glass bulbs and ballasts. And so those are things that are constantly being replaced just over time. So with a project like this, we want to capture the benefit, not just of the energy savings, but of that operations and maintenance savings of those glass bulbs and ballast that are no longer being purchased for the next 20 years. So we definitely have that included in here.
But you're just doing the BAS and light project. Those are the only two you're doing, not the electrical or anything.
I mean, that's what's being recommended to us right now. But I mean, you, that's your decision.
Those are the numbers we have right now. It's just those two. What's what's the difference between both of them? How much is lighting and how much is BAS?
It's almost an even split with the lighting being just a little over $2 million and the controls being a little under $2 million.
That's a rebate from AEP. So whenever you do a project that conserves or saves energy on the air conditioning side or the lighting side, you can get rebates from AEP for doing for doing that type of project. So we will, we do all the legwork and paperwork during the project. We'll submit that to AEP and then we're estimating about a $30,000 dollar rebate check that will come back to the district.
What I No, you go ahead.
Is there a reason why we're not trying to address these this equipment that's 25 years old that's on the brink of breakage first?
We'd be happy to address that. I think it's
Why is the others being recommended prior to that? Because that seems like a bigger priority. They're about near the end of their life.
Yeah, that's a good question. I mean, we'd be happy to do that. I think what the reason we were looking at this particular project was because it's a self funding project. If we include the mechanical, the electrical, then you definitely are going to have to pull monies out of your budget to be able to do that type of product to do the whole thing. Now, we, I think it's based on the age and of of all this equipment, you've you do need to do something, you need to plan something for that. And we've we've got a good plan. It's just a matter of funding. It's the funding side.
When you say self funding, what does that mean?
So we're guaranteeing right now, based on the engineering that we've done, we're guaranteeing that the district will see close to 200, that 199, 500? we're guaranteeing that the district will see close to two hundred, that one ninety nine, five hundred, a hundred and ninety nine thousand, five hundred dollars. When we get into the next, once we sign the contract and move forward with the construction, what we're saying is that at the end of the every year, the district will we're guaranteeing that you will have that in your budget because we're going to reduce your utility cost. So that amount will be saved from your utility cost savings and it'll be there at the end of the year to be able to make your your debt service payment to the bank.
Basically, you're taking out a loan to pay for this.
Yes.
We're taking out a loan to pay for this and you're saying with the savings that we receive, we're going to pay the note off with the savings.
That's correct.
Right? So we're we're just shuffling one expense to another expense of this.
Yeah, I mean, currently, I mean, if you don't do anything, you're if if you don't if you don't do anything, you're given that that's going straight to your retail electric provider. You're losing seventeen percent opportunity. That's you're going to continue paying that no matter what. But if you do this project, what we're doing, guaranteeing that you're going to reduce it seventeen percent, but that seventeen percent two hundred thousand will pay for the debt service on the loan that you that you take out.
What happens if you make that guarantee and we don't see that saving?
Then our company's on the hook for the shortfall. So if we if let's say we only come in at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in savings, then we owe the district the additional fifty thousand. So all the risk is put on our side for the performance of this.
So when y'all did this audit, y'all took into account the age of our buildings and the equipment? And is that what you're saying that because our buildings are old, insulation is old, windows are old, all of this? And so the savings sometimes could go out the window because of other factors. Does that change you being responsible for that amount?
Yeah, if I'm understanding your your question, I think if there's other factors involved, yeah, under the contract, there'll be weather. But we guarantee that I want to say, Ryan, is it ninety percent?
That is correct. We we guarantee ninety percent of the projected savings.
So you're going to have a buffer in there. So it's that buffer typically covers a lot of those unknowns, I guess you could say, that could happen. But we're still on the hook for if we don't if we don't hit the the target and the targets are are measured and verified annually by the KWH, the kilowatt hours usage. So it's measured directly from the the amount of usage at the meter. So it's pretty accurate when we come back and measure it.
This is more for Pam. If if we don't go to this, are we on the hook for money?
Yes, because we signed a contract with them a little over a year ago. I don't remember the dollar amount that seventy one. Probably a little under a hundred grand for their work on this. But again, you know, I think we probably say it at every board meeting, you know, if the high school controls go down, we don't have a plan. You know, the kids will have no AC. There's no windows to open. And I think that's, you know, one reason that they do focus on the controls because for one, right now, we have their system in there and when it goes down, they're scrambling. So far, they've been able to pilfer parts from other places or we get some manufactured so we get back going. That's one of the main reasons that that's one of the projects that we're focusing on is because, I mean, that's there's not a plan. What do you do with eleven hundred kids when there's no air conditioning?
But it's that's that's not counted. These units that you're telling are at the end of their life is not included in that.
No, not the HVAC.
System itself, the on the wall, but if the AC breaks, which is really what we're concerned with before is the systems breaking because they're old. This is the junior high, twenty years, Dalton, twenty years. And there's one that's nonfunctional at the junior high. So so those break, it doesn't matter what that system does, those break, right? We just don't have it.
I mean, that's my understanding, yes.
And so this doesn't necessarily solve that problem that you're talking about because the systems go down at the high school, they're going to go down because it's an old system.
Right, but the controls, so the controls are our biggest issue right now. When we have a when the high school AC goes down, the correct me if I'm wrong, the control system is so old that we there are not parts for it.
That's correct.
Anymore. And so right now, we could still repair the systems, the older systems, the the actual units. But what we're having issues repairing is the control system because it's so old. Is that correct?
That's my
The equipment, it's obsolete already, so they don't make the the that equipment anymore. Right. So you have to look on Amazon or different areas for parts and they're very expensive now. But your question on the mechanical side, I mean, you you've it'd be a good, we've got a plan. We've already put design. We're ready to get into construction even for the the mechanical side of it as well. But we were trying to be sensitive to what we felt as though you could borrow right now to be able to do something versus nothing. And that's why we were recommending, okay, out of this whole list of scope of work, what what could we do? And then those two were the the two items that made the most sense, but
If we wanted to change them out and we wanted to address the systems instead of the lighting, could we do that? And then you would give us the savings on that still?
Yeah.
Is there options to change what you're proposing?
Absolutely. Ryan, do you want to answer that? You're you're on the engineering side.
I didn't follow the question. Can you please repeat?
If 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 they were to want to change up the scope of the work for this project and look at mechanical and controls versus the lighting, would we be able to come back with a with that option? And I the answer is yes, but I'll let you explain explain it a little bit better.
Sure. The the major difference, of course, is the HVAC work that's necessary is quite a bit more significant than the lighting project and the savings is quite a bit less. And so with the LED lighting, we see a relatively short payback, some somewhere in the ten to fifteen year range. And then with the HVAC equipment, it's much longer. So it's not a short return on investment. It's not a project that pays for itself quickly by any stretch of the means. So it's like Aaron said, we we kind of look for a project that would pay for itself in the twenty year term limit. There are still a great many HVAC needs around the district. But we'd be happy to evaluate a more scope or alternate scope. We would just look for direction from the from the district on that.
Then it the seventh of lighting and the BAS. But you got seventeen percent total, but what's the breakout of that?
Ryan, would you know that?
The it's almost entirely lighting, yes. So of that seventeen percent, the lion's share is definitely lighting.
Yeah, what Rodney is thinking.
We need to get it done. I mean, am I wrong? And all my conversations with Rodney, what keeps him up at night is the controls at the high school.
The high school.
If there's a power outage, he's like, oh, my gosh, is it going to come up? I mean, if you ask him, that's what he's going to say that that keeps him awake at night is if that goes down because there there are no parts available to keep it up and going.
You have to build itself.
No, they're on tips.
Y'all selected us already through the interlocal purchasing system. That that was the procurement method that y'all used.
Possibility that we may go out for a bond for this.
And I mean, that's we talked about a maintenance tax note is what Pam had talked about.
Well, to include all of the mechanical or whatever, the change of the system, because that's ultimately on, I mean, they're twenty five years old. They're everything's at the end of their life.
There's lots of things in the district at the end of its life.
I know, but I'm asking that question if we could go out for a bond for it.
Oh, we absolutely could. We wouldn't be able to do that till November. And if you remember, our community didn't come out for us for less than a cent increase on the TRE. So I'm not positive that at this point they would support a bond.
What I'm asking is for Schneider is because we owe this money if we don't commit. If we have the opportunity to request this of the community and see if they do, if not, then we'll look at our options of doing this. Do we have a timeframe that we have to respond is my question?
No, I mean, we're it's we definitely would be flexible. Y'all have been a great partner of ours. What we we have seen and worked with other districts in a situation like this is right now, knowing that you the the needs are very strong and the on the on the BAS, the building automation system that keep Rodney up at night. Okay, so we would probably recommend moving forward with this smaller project. Then we we could break out all the rest of the scope, help you put together that for the bond. If it goes past, then you would work out the financials where you might be able to roll that maintenance tax note currently into the bond and cover that now in the terms and conditions where there's not going to be any penalties or maybe a lower penalty for paying it off early or something like that. That's what we've done with the districts, but but I think that's a good plan to consider because you this equipment's already at its end of life. It's still working, the mechanical. But you you don't want to be in emergency mode every month on change outs on. It's best to have a good plan and address everything together versus piecemealing in a hope as emergency mode.
Possible, maybe we can get a breakdown between these two. On the lighting and the systems, right, the control systems and see what they look like individually. Is that possible?
Well, I think Ryan was saying that they're it's basically about two and two.
Million apiece?
Yeah.
And but we'll have that like finalized for the next meeting? Or the exact, I mean, I don't know. Do we have to have the exact amount?
Yeah, well, for the next meeting, it was what we had done is rolled up the 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 total project into a total cost, but we can definitely break it out for you in case you wanted to. But I think the whole planning that we've been doing with your financial advisor and and the maintenance tax note is looking at a total project right now. But I mean, it's this is your project. We'll we'll work with you all on whatever makes sense.
What's your interest rate on it?
Oh, gosh, I it's not. We have nothing to do with the finance.
Right now, we are out with the financial advisors working with various lenders, our local bank, other lenders that they have worked with. And we don't have that number back yet, but I'm thinking it's going to be somewhere between four and five percent. And I did make sure that they put in it that it could be callable at any time. So if we did have a windfall of money at some point, that we would be able to pay it off at any time. I know I've been at, I don't think it's, well, no, I think here we don't have, even if we had excess money, they're not allowed to be paid off early. So I do want it to where it's callable. So should somebody win the lottery and want to donate a ton of money to the district that we could pay that off. But we do look at projects that try to make pay for itself with the project with the savings. So that, you know, we're not out additional money because, you know, general funds tight and this should pay, make the payment with their savings. If not, Aaron's going to write us a check so that I can make my payment usually in August.
How many times have you not been able to guarantee in your?
Yes, it's what I've heard is less than one percent. Like not even a half a percent. It's we're we're really good at at our engineering group is really good at this. And I mean, if if we if there is a mistake, we'll come back and try to figure out what where did we go wrong? Was it the equipment? Was it the calculate? If it was the calculations, which it shouldn't be, I mean, you're going to have it. You have a third party engineer that's reviewing it right now. So that will feel we'll feel good about that. But let's say some equipment that we prescribed that just didn't meet its goal because of the equipment, then we're going to come back and try to fix that because we don't want to have to continue paying every year the shortfall.
This four million, it covers all equipment, all installation?
Yeah, that's a turnkey. Excuse me. It includes your the equipment, the labor, the project management, the engineering, it's all inclusive. It's this is this this type of project is done what through a performance contract? A design build. It's basically a design build project.
Said something earlier about an engineer. Is that included?
The engineering is included. That's what we've done since y'all approved us. When y'all first approved us, we've come in and we've our engineers have put this design together. I know you don't have blueprints here, but at the end of, once we get into the project and we're that's whenever we start putting the blueprints together. Yeah, Ryan, do you want to comment on the warranties on this scope of work that's being addressed, recommended and probably some of the other scope as well?
Sure. The the standard warranty on pretty much everything is one year, including labor and parts. A lot of the project would have much more than one year, including the lighting. The lighting material would be a minimum of five years and some of it, I would say a significant majority of it, the the LEDs that replace the fluorescent tubes have a ten year warranty.
What about the mechanical and?
Right. We don't have any mechanical, of course, in this first phase of work, but typically mechanical equipment is going to be one year across the board and then it'll be five years on the compressor. But there are extended warranties available. If that's something the district prefers, we can evaluate those as well.
That this guarantee is for how long? That we have that savings?
It's the guarantee will be renewed. You'll be able to renew it every year. So let's say two, three years down the road, if y'all decide if it looks as though, hey, this, these this savings has been hitting the mark for the last three years in a row or five years in a row, you can end the guarantee at that point. But it's good for the term of the of your of your finance, financial commitment. So if it's a twenty year term, we'll guarantee it for the twenty years, but every year you're you're paying a service fee for us to come in and measure and verify and to make sure that you're hitting the mark. So we basically become on an annual basis throughout and which we're currently under that right now with you. We're 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 your basic energy management team. So we're watching and any any anything that happens with the district that we see that's that's not consistent, we're getting with Rodney's team to to identify what is what's going on because we need to get those areas fixed.
How much does that fee to renew that?
This for this particular project, Ryan, do you have a breakdown of what that was going to cost?
Sorry, I was talking to myself on mute. I don't have it right in front of me, but let me run it down, see if I can put my hands on that real quick.
Is there people here that can work on structuralware, software that y'all have on it, or is it just y'all? For the BAS?
Yeah, well, we train your staff. Your staff will be trained on on use on
Right. Well, if if one of the controllers goes out, how are we going to get that fixed? Do we have to go to y'all or is there anybody local that can fix that?
Ryan, do you have the answer for that?
You know, we we really want the district to be as comfortable as possible with that control system because it is the single most important thing when it comes to managing the utility spend. So we have customers that actually have enough training that they buy hardware from us and they install it themselves. Um, actually have enough training that they buy hardware from us and they install it themselves. And we really like that situation. We have other customers that don't want, they just want to be able to pick up the phone and have it taken care of. So. I think we can kind of meet the district wherever you want, um, you know. Your, uh, H V A C and controls team or they're pretty technically savvy. And, uh, Rodney's been, of course, doing a great job of keeping the older systems running. And so I'm sure that that team will take off and, uh, work with the new systems quite well. And so. We really want to make sure they're very well trained because we want them to own and manage that system for, because it is key for the savings.
Our technicians, the closest technicians we have are, they, they're in San Antonio. Our closest office is there, San Antonio.
What's your lifetime support for the controllers that we're going to get? Are that is, will they be backwards compatible or forwards compatible with new systems in the future?
Ryan, that's a technical question.
The simple answer is yes, they're not going to, um. Uh, abandon any technology moving forward. So, um. Like I can give you some more, uh, literature on that. That's something I can reach out to our, uh, our technical teams and, and get a better understanding of, but the simple answer is yes.
Around time like a year to get it, to get it completed. Do you have that on your?
Yeah, we, we're looking at construction starting in June and it'll take us about a year to complete. So we're looking at May of next year, twenty twenty six, that, uh, the project would be completed.
After it's completed or during the?
Yeah, that would be something that you arrange with the, uh, financing, uh, team, uh, and the bank. Uh, we've seen where the projects. Have been, uh, uh, scheduled to make first payment. After the project is completed, we've seen some where they are six months into the project, first, first payment, uh, made at that time. We anticipate quite a bit of savings, uh, in, in the first several months because the, the, uh, the lighting and controls, especially the lighting. In the construction phase, you're going to see savings, uh, immediately.
Asking these questions because where we're at financially, you know, that's what I'm worried about. You know, and then the other one, Jackie asked that question, you know, like the, like the, where you come in and you inspect the work and. You know, if it's going to be eighty thousand a year, fifty thousand a year, just come in and look at the product, you know, the working right inspection. You know, that's, that's a whole lot of money. So I think we need to definitely get an answer on that one.
Yeah, it's not going to be.
That's on top of the four million, right?
Yeah, the, it, what we do is we've, we've, uh, and once Ryan looks, finds that number, I'm going to, I'm taking a guess, it's probably around ten. Thousand, somewhere in that range.
I was actually thinking our current contract is seven to eight.
Yeah, so.
I think we're currently under with them.
What we do is these estimates, these, the two hundred thousand a year in savings, we've projected. That that annual fee that you'll pay for this guarantee is part of that savings. So you, you should, you'll have the money in your budget at the end of the year to be able to make that, that payment as well.
Pam, do we know the expenses that we're seeing right now because of this issue that we're having?
I, I mean, I've not analyzed it because, I mean, the savings, I mean. No, because, I mean, it's what our current electric bill is. With our current lighting and that, they've gone through all the calculations with the changing it to L E D. What the savings are, but I mean, I don't, I couldn't tell you.
I mean, we, I'd like to know that, like, what are we spending annually on, on this maintenance? How much are, do we have set in our budget aside for this? Um, and you might not know it right now, but I'd like to know it.
Okay, I, I don't, I don't know that that's going to be available because, I mean, I could tell you how many light bulbs we have purchased. I can probably tell you what the electricians, uh, charge, but can I say? How much time they spend a month on changing out fluorescent lights at the high school? I probably cannot come up with a number for that.
So wait, you can't come up with an expense for that?
Not to that detail of at the high school, I could say they've probably replaced this many lights. I can look at the work orders. And work at it that way, but I don't know that they keep that information to that detail in the work order.
Well, I would think like, say, for example, we have something in the budget that we say, okay, we've already, we know without this audit. That those systems are broken, right? We, pretty much anybody here on this board that's been on the board, we know that. That electricity, the systems go down and we're afraid of them going down. And so have we made any repairs on any of those things? Do we have it in our budget to forecast for it to be broken down as of right now? Do we have a forecasted amount? A number that says we have it set aside to address that and then like subtract whatever that is and. Doesn't it go to that detail whenever you pay for something you don't pay for?
I, I don't keep it at that level. I can see if maintenance and operations keep it to that level, but I don't keep the maintenance down to. That detail of how much was on each A C unit and that. I think with the software that, um, Aaron was talking about in here, we're talking about preventive maintenance and stuff. We could keep it at. That detailed level, but I do not think we have the capability for that level of detail at this time.
So we don't have anything in the budget where you've earmarked money for a broken system right now?
It's all under maintenance and.
I know where it's at, but I'm asking is there an amount that's earmarked for something that goes down right now?
I do if it's over five thousand dollars, it would be a capital expense. Anything that has a per unit cost of over five thousand dollars. Would come out of a sixty six hundred.
So how much do you have allocated for that right now?
I don't know the exact amount that I have. I'm going to guess probably twenty to twenty five thousand dollars, but that's a guess on my point.
For all campuses? Even though we know that it's broken, we, we haven't allocated any amount of money to try to work on, on forecasting for them breaking?
Yes, but if it's breaking and just needs repair, that comes out of a different object code. Or if it is over a per unit cost of five thousand and we don't have enough in there, then we're going to move it from someplace else to purchase it.
So, so we've never done that as a board? We've never done that, Carol and Laura?
We don't get involved in that.
But we, we know it's a problem, so we wouldn't forecast to ask for it to be included in the budget?
I mean, it is in the budget under function fifty one, which is maintenance and operations. It's just not down to. The air conditioner that runs the one hundred wing at the high school. We don't have it at that level of detail.
It just seems like projects that we should be looking at, you know, twenty five year old systems. And we don't have anything in our budget right now to address a twenty five year old system. I mean, we're doing this to address it, but it seems like it would need to be included in the budget in some way.
So we do have, like, we budget. Extra, I would say in maintenance and operations, knowing how old our buildings are. I don't know that in maintenance and operations, we budget like A C plumbing. I don't, we just, the roofs, I mean, there's, there's the maintenance. Budget and then we talk about, okay, what goes down, but I mean, it's padded for it.
Well, I'm just saying, like, as a board, we've never said, said we need to up, update these systems. Like, we need to update junior high and, and have it as a goal. Like, we've never done anything like that as a board.
I think the, the last time they did the building assessments was in twenty twenty. And at that time, I think, uh, we needed about a hundred million to fix all the, everything that was wrong with all the, the.
So, I think you're talking about a repair, like a, a, uh.
Like an update to one school and addressing it each budget year, you know, and it in the budget, so. We don't have to take out a twenty million dollar, you know, loan or whatever, or two millions, right, four million.
So once we get caught up with it, I mean, we, we are going to start, um. You know. It's so much need right now and we don't have money. Like, we're starting with what we can. And so, yes, we would be looking at, like, what can we do year over year? If, if we were financially solvent, we should have a replacement schedule for all of our equipment. That goes twenty years out because we know at twenty years, equipment needs to be replaced. So. In a situ, like, that should have been. Like, that's something that districts do, and when we open legacy. We'll start to have that plan for like in twenty years, we need to be planning for replacing. You know, it's a replacement schedule that you build. There just hasn't been money to do it. I mean, I, everybody that's been on the board can say.
Concern is the high school, you know, the high school is one of the newest buildings that we have, right?
That is probably the newest, besides the additions from twenty years ago, twenty five years ago, we had the.
Eighty, eighty six or eighty.
I just don't know why we haven't put it in the budget in order to address the problem, you know, like, why have, if, if it has been, I mean, I've only been on here. Few months, but I've heard it in reports and I've heard other board members speak about the fear of it going down. But why haven't we addressed it?
Because there's no money to address it. We already have a two and a half million dollar deficit budget that we adopted this year.
I mean, we've got five million here set aside, so I mean, we could, isn't, I mean, I don't know how much an air unit is, is it? A million dollars to do junior high or what do you think?
Oh, far, it would be far more.
It is.
Far more. I, I mean, I.
Is it, do you, you know?
To do what?
Do like the junior high to update that?
The air conditioning? Yeah, um, I don't know what just the junior high is, uh, but I, I know district wide. The total project estimates were like a little over twenty million dollars worth of work.
To do the air.
To do everything, but not just the air, but, um, the lighting, the air conditioning, the controls. It was a combination of, 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 of different scope. Ryan, do you have the, do you have an idea what just the junior high could have ran?
I don't have that in front of me, um, but it's something we can, uh, look up and return to the district.
We have anything already in the budget, um, to address issues like this? I mean. Where does Rodney pay out for that? I mean, I'm sure it's already in there. So then what amount? Would we not have to allocate in the budget anymore? What savings would we have in the budget other than the bill? But what savings and cost would we have that's already in our budget to pay for those things? That's what I'm asking.
We can have Rodney pull work orders and see what. Like how much we've spent on light bulbs, how much we've, I mean, we can have Rodney pull, and, I mean, as best we can.
So like, the, they, he doesn't budget and say, um. You know, I have all of these projects coming up. I need in my budget, I need the five million that's out there right now. He doesn't forecast what he's going to be spending. Like plans of what he's going to be doing with his money that's not presented to y'all and included is, or how do y'all do that? How do you put it in the budget?
I mean, they can ask all day long. And I mean, we talk about all the needs, we talk about the needs all the time. But at the end of the day. There, there's no money for that. You say we have five million dollars, but if we end up with a two and a half million dollar deficit budget this year. Then that means I only have two and a half million left in fund balance for next year.
No, what I'm saying is here under plant maintenance and operations, there's five million, seven that were, is it in our adopted budget?
Yes.
And I'm trying to understand, does, how does Rodney come up with that number? And how does that get included here? Does he have his set plans of what he's doing and projecting? Or where does that figure come from?
I'm going to go out on a limb and say he probably looks at historical to what we have historically spent. I mean, he knows what needs to be replaced. But again. You know, he can come ask all day long, but I don't have the money for him to have that. So we know. District wide, there's millions of dollars worth of things. We're just trying to keep what we have going. And if something goes completely out, we have a little bit of money set aside to buy a new A C unit. That we do put some money back and then if we don't have to use that at the end of the year and there's something that he needs to get the year going. Then we use that money, but you know, that, that was, that would be a lot of effort going in. When, at the end of the day, he isn't going to be able to get that.
I mean, most organizations do that. They propose, the divisions propose, and that's how they get their budget approved or declined.
No, they, they present, but they also are not going to spend time bringing me ten million dollars worth of projects. For, to present to me, for me to tell them no, because I only have three and a half million dollars for them.
Well, and, and the question is, what are those projects? And is there a project in there for this? That's what I'm asking. And you're saying there's not.
A project in for what?
For, for this issue that we're talking, that we're trying to address here, that, that it's been going on for years.
No, I mean, just the controls would be two million dollars. I don't have two million dollars for the controls.
You know, we don't have money. I know you've said that already. What I'm saying is when he proposes to you, has he proposed an amount? That he says, let's forecast and try to fix something that is in dire, like, it's keeping them up at night. As it, has that been brought included in the budget is what I'm saying.
No, I mean, we talk about it, but he doesn't bring it forth because he knows I don't have two million dollars to give him.
Or if every department is not bringing it forward, I.
No, we talk about it, but at the end of the day.
See a list of stuff, hey, we don't have the money and this is the thing, so we know when things go wrong in the future. They, we're aware of it already. We, we know we can't fund them.
I mean, we, we talk about projects like that, but I mean, is there a, a complete list? Rodney probably has it. It probably used to be in. The board agenda that was page after page after page long of things that needed to be fixed.
That almost, sorry, that almost sounds like you're. Second, third to the last page of capital asset planning. What we're describing here, it's, it's like we're forecasting that things may go down. It's going to cost so much money. We may not have the money, but we need to be prepared.
Yeah, we, we, I would highly.
It almost sounds like it's, like that would be part of that.
Capital asset plan is what.
We just recently did that for San Felipe del Rio. And, uh, you're able to break down, I mean, you could put. Just about anything into that capital asset planning from your furniture to, but if we want to focus on. On the, on the needs that we're talking about. Uh, when we put that together, we're able to break it out into what needs to be done over the next, uh. Year, three years, five years, and then we're able to put estimates. Projections on what you need a budget for those next three and five year plan, even a tenure on what you're going to, what's going to be out of. Out of gate, the equipment that's going to be already at its end of useful life. So we'll break all that down for you. So we, we've been doing a lot of that type of, uh, uh, additional, um, service. Into our projects to be able to bring, because a lot of, be honest with you, a lot of districts don't have a good plan.
What's, what's scary too is, you know, Rodney. You, you know, we mentioned Rodney, 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 but if something, God forbid, something happens to Rodney, leaves or was anything, then we don't really know. Unless the data is stored somewhere. You know, that information, that's what's hard. And you have to rely on one individual. Maybe like a small group or something. It makes it kind of scary to know that. Big corporations usually have that information stored somewhere. I did have a simplistic question, a simple question. These, this system, the B A S system, and you probably can answer it too. Is walking into like, uh, I work for A T and T and I'll walk into a building that hardly ever, anybody ever goes in. And there's, uh, motion sensing things, right? The A C kicks on when you're in there. It stays on for a little bit and turns off, you leave and it can be off for a week. Lights, same thing with lighting. Is that what you're proposing here as well, or is that a little bit different?
There, I believe on the mechanical, yeah, there is sensors of, uh, humidity type sensors and, and sensors that will help. Schedule and, and turn them on and off. On the lighting side years ago. That was being recommended, the motion sensors, but L E D lighting now is so, uh, is so efficient. That, that's just an extra cost that you're adding, an extra piece of equipment that doesn't make sense to add that anymore for the lighting. But for the mechanical, Ryan, you might be able to add a little more detail to this, but, uh, can you? And, did you hear the question about that?
I did, and I think your answer is pretty good. You know, there was a time, I would say ten years ago. And, and further back when we had, uh, sensors were a part of all of our work. But what we found is, uh, with L E D lighting, reducing the wattage now by seventy five percent. There's not that much savings left for the sensors. And of course, the sensors, they really are almost the opposite of the L E D lighting. With L E D lighting is a great return on investment. It's improves the aesthetics and it enhances the maintenance. The occupancy sensors actually is a new part that over the course of time typically will have problems with it, either the sensor or the power pack. And it does not have a short payback any longer. And, uh, on top of that, you know, even though we're talking about new technology, uh, sensors that both. Watch passive infrared and listen. Watch passive infrared and listen. They're still gonna turn the lights off on you when you're not moving and you're being quiet, like when you're taking a test. And so they're really not that popular. Uh, the savings uh, in a school environment is pretty minimal is what we find because the hours are so structured. Um, and, and the same thing's true for the HVAC. We can really go in and schedule the equipment very accurately. And uh, the district can do that literally uh, months and years in advance. And so. Uh, after hours, we actually prefer for the system to run by push button override. And so that way, if somebody were to walk into the building and it were comfortable, or comfortable outside, you know, it's a mild day. They wouldn't even think to push the override button. They wouldn't even have to. Versus the sensor that is gonna go ahead and turn the air conditioning on. And it might run even if it didn't need to. So we've kind of seen a lot of change there when it comes to the sensors. Does that make sense?
I, I do want to say this. So. Replacement schedules generally happen. A, and planning for all of that happens when you install. So I'm gonna use the. The example of turf, okay? So a district puts in a turf field and it costs a million dollars. And you know that in. Ten years, you have to replace that turf. And you know that every year you have to stretch it. So. What the district does is then plans to save every year. Two hundred thousand dollars to be able to replace the turf and fifty thousand dollars to get it stretched and for inflation. So every year the district is gonna save back two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You know, at, at the point when new buildings are built, you know that in twenty years, you're going to have to replace AC. And so you should be saving back, but our district has been running a deficit budget for ten years. And so there's no money to put back. You have to, like you have to be adding to your fund balance every year to be able to operate out of. Your fund balance to replace things that cost a million, two million dollars. And so. That's where we're headed, like this year, right? We want to balance the budget. And we're gonna balance the budget because we have to, we only, we're gonna be down to two and a half million dollars in our fund balance, probably. And so first we have to balance the budget. Then we can start to save back money. Who knows, maybe twenty years ago, there was a plan to put back money every time and I don't know what happened. But like for legacy, like we have to be planning that in twenty years, we have to replace that HVAC. And so we're gonna need to be. Making sure that we are putting money back every year. And you have to pass bonds when it gets to this point where we need seven million dollars worth of roofing and. You know, probably twenty million dollars worth of HVAC, like you have to be able to pass a bond and. We're gonna have to build trust in our community to be able to do that because. The work should be done as you go. Uh, and a plan should be made to be putting it back if you're planning on doing it out of fund balance. Um, but. It's the position that we're in. And I, I really feel like. Pretty much everybody on the board has sort of inherited that position and we have to like. Know better, do better. We're gonna have to do better for, and balancing the budget is the start of that. But we will have replacement schedules and we will know, you know, how much we need to put back every year and things like that. You know, going forward.
Yeah, I think we need to find, I mean, next year at least, I mean, we need to know vehicles. ACs and there's just so much stuff in the district to do. If, if we don't. Put that list together now, just because we don't have money, you know, we're always gonna be in the same game.
And we have to have priority, you know, and, and talk about what that priority is and. Of course, it would be up to y'all, y'all would see it and then bring the budget, you know, whatever it is. But to say that it's not there, that's kind of scares me. I think that we've heard it in so many conversations about the scary unit. And the fact that it's not there, that's concerning. I mean, if he's losing sleep at night, you're, you brought it up in the last meeting about the. Roofing, I think, was the seven million for the roofing, I think.
We can bring you replacement schedules, like we can bring you replacement schedules, but. It ha, but we would need the money to operate the district and be able to save money back for it. For those things.
So like what could happen is they propose, like departments propose the budget to you. You have them, the line items, whatever they are, priority, what do you want to prioritize? And then that's how they make it on here. And then things move off the budget, the things that aren't priority. Right? And that goes for every department. But that would make sense in order to build a budget. In order to truly know what is being spent, what's allocated for that. And you're saying that he's having to order parts on Amazon and everything like that. So I'm assuming. That he's allocated some funds in that, on his budget that he pays out of. That's my assumption. Most budgets, usually you have a budget that says I'm gonna spend this amount for. Books or whatever, iPads and you forecast and that's what I'm asking. And. I think it's important that we do that, even if we have a priority list. Of what we need to address so that it doesn't get to this point where we have twenty five year. Equipment that's near the end of their life. So for the future budget, that's what I would say. That to make sure, I mean, I think maybe your department's already sending you that information of what they would like to include in the budget. Is that right?
We're working towards that, but I will certainly give them direction to. Uh, provide us with everything that they possibly need and we'll bring that forth and. You can, you can prioritize it.
What, it doesn't have to be us, it's be all the prioritized, it's, it's just.
It'll be so much that we don't have the money for it. And so we're gonna have, like, we would need Rodney's recommendation about, okay, we're, we need to do this first and then this.
Things to keep them up at night is what I'm saying.
It might be easier to list what doesn't need to be replaced in the next five years than what needs to go on the list. I mean, I'm being honest.
And I know you are.
I mean, that's, that's gonna be a huge undertaking when everything in the district is held together with bail and wire.
Well, and you said something earlier that he um, basically took what he spent last year. Is, is, is that might be the reason why we got five seven here is what he took from what he spent last year and just like forecasted this year is. I think that's what you said earlier.
Yeah, I mean, because.
And that's okay.
And he knows we don't have any money, so. Man, everybody knows we don't have any money, so he's not gonna sit there and come in and ask for seven million dollars worth of stuff. When he knows that I can't give him seven million dollars to fix it. So. We budget and it's what breaks that we have to repair, then that's what we repair. To, to stay, to keep things going. I mean, it's a, it's a wing and a prayer.
When, when y'all bring us the budget every year, we do it. We, I think in my, Lauren, we. See what they ask for. And then this is what we can give them based on how much money we got in the checkbook. We kind of did, did that already with the, what you're saying.
That it's in there, I'm just trying.
Yeah, it's there.
Our savings be, but, but you don't know what that is.
He asked, if he asked for twenty million and he only gets four, then he's gotta go back and prioritize within the four, you know? I mean, that's what I always had to do when I was doing the budget stuff for the school district, but. You know, I got, oh, I never got more than one third of what I asked for, you know? And uh, I just had to go back and.
That's what he needs to do. You would send in your request.
Yeah, I would go to Pam or whoever was there. Well, Pam was here back, back then. And I would, you know, there's, there's a form we used to fill out. I don't know what she does now. That in detail, what every dollar was for that I was asking for, or any other department or high school, whatever. And then she would come back after she looks at everybody's budget and they prioritize within their shop. You know, what's most important, because they know what affects the district overall. Whereas I don't know what affects the whole district. So, you know, which makes sense. And, and then they would come back and tell, they would decide who gets how much of this. Uh, I know there was some departments that asked for money that ended up getting more because it was a different. The district knew things that were gonna happen that that teacher didn't know or the school didn't know. So I mean, I would get my money and I would just come back and say, oh, we can't do this, we can't do that, but we can do this, you know?
Well, this last year.
I'm sure that's what Rodney does, but my point was we, we get told that stuff. Don't we?
I mean, this last year, we did a zero base budget where everybody started with zero. And they needed to come in and ask for what they absolutely had to have. And they had to list it out. You know, I want uh, first grade supplies. I had anticipated, I'm gonna have. Three hundred students and I'm gonna spend ten dollars per student on supplies. They came in with that level of detail. Because they knew there was no need in asking for anything above and beyond what they absolutely had to have. To function the year.
It was like, to fill out all that paperwork for the budget for the request. It was like a three or four day project with no interruptions almost to get it all done. I don't know if y'all still do it that way, if you do it by.
We do it on, we do it on Skyward.
Yeah, so.
And then we met back with some departments and it's like, no, even though. You know, there's a couple of campuses that had really, you know, requested for lots of stuff. It's like, um, no. We, we can't afford that. And then we cut their budget.
They, they used to look at, I, I don't, I guess you still do. And way it was put, how come I only got one third of what I asked for? Well, we can only approve what we feel like is in the best interest of our kids. That they're gonna benefit the most from or affect them the most. And to me, that's, that's still the most important thing to me.
Yeah, and that's why I'm saying that about the air, because obviously, what do, who said it? What are we gonna do with eleven hundred students or whatever? And so that's why I'm asking that. It just seems like a priority. I know it's a big amount. But is it a way, like what you're saying, saving some money? Putting it aside every year, whatever, you know, and, and saying it's in the budget, we're just gonna put it aside, we're gonna save it. Cause that's the only way we're gonna tackle it. And so, I mean, anyways.
I do it all.
Yeah, exactly.
Kind of thing.
Exactly.
But, um, what worries me the most about the, what? You know, I didn't know the controls and all that stuff was in that bad a shape, but what worries me the most is. If we don't do that and take care of that, the HVACs. Are working and they can buy parts and they can be fixed. It just costs a lot of money to do it because they're old. But the controls, if one, if it goes out at the high school, I'm afraid of the fact will be left with a bunch of kids burning up. And that's not in their best interest, you know? Cause the controls, you can't, I mean, there comes a time you can't buy parts. I know that from just having cars, you know, and stuff. So, yeah.
Biggest concern with this is twenty years and, and I think Robert brought it up is like the age of the. The compatibility, right, of the parts and. You know, what happens to us, we're gonna be paying this still. And then. It's too old and what, what do, we're gonna have to take out another loan to pay for that? Is that what happened? I'm just.
Yeah, that's a good question. So uh, in this type of project, the lending institution, the banks will not lend any money unless the. Life of the equipment uh, meets that. So thi- this particular uh, uh, scope of work, it meets that. That it'll last twenty years.
Mr. Garcia, as far as the, the money, you know, and I've been new to the board, so, but I often wonder about this. You know, people bring to this, for example, you bring four point one million. Is that like a fixed rate that because of the wording that you used earlier, the, the agreement that you have on prices and stuff like that? Where the, those things are negotiable, where you say, I can't give you that, but I'll give you three point five? Yeah, so we negotiate that, in other words.
Uh, your staff does, but uh, what we've done is we've. Put together a, what we've come back with is a firm, and, and the four point one, I, I think it's gonna be a little less than that when we come back next week. We're, we're firming up the numbers. We'll be presenting that to, to Pam and Rodney. But uh, the uh. When we come back with that final number, it's gonna be a firm fixed price, no change orders. And that includes a turnkey project that includes everything from engineering, design development, project management. The equipment and the guarantee behind it, that it's gonna, uh, that you're gonna see the savings.
And another thing that Aaron didn't mention is, you know, especially like these lighting projects and stuff. They hope to get most of them done in the summer when there's not kids on campus. But the projects that will go past when the kids are there, they work around the kids' schedules. So that might be evenings, weekends, et cetera. So there is minimal disruption to. The staffing kids, which I think is important.
For the EPA grant we talked about that we didn't qualify for. Are y'all in charge of, you know, tracking that and filling it out for next time or are we?
We are.
What we did is we helped support the uh, all the technical side of it, the scope of the work, the. The costs, the savings, because there was, uh, there was information that needed to be in, uh, and put it into the. Application about what type of savings there was gonna be and how, how the impact would, what type of impact it would bring to the district. So we provided all that.
Now, do you look out for other grants and then kind of nudge us to be like, hey, we saw this.
Absolutely, absolutely. We're, that's what we, we always do.
So this is, you're saying this is one time rebate is just through y'all, then we are responsible for doing it on our own, is that what you're, when this says right, you're one time, it's.
No, that.
We can do it every year?
That's through A E P, American Electric Power, your, the utility company.
It's a different, different one.
It's a rebate through A E P.
Yeah, so if, if we get into a project later with the air conditioning. We'll submit the application to A E P that they'll, for the uh, rebates. That they give for savings on putting energy efficient type mechanical equipment in. So that would, that could be another rebate later, but that's a different scope of work. But this is a one time rebate that comes from A E P.
I mean, twelve years ago, I think it was about twelve years ago, there was a CCO grant and we got um. Two million dollars worth, worth of HVAC. And we had contracted with Snyder and them to put it in. I mean, that was Batesville. I mean, it hit, I think, every campus. So we watch for those type things and that was strictly a grant. There was no payback or anything like that. So we do watch for that. So. Some of the HVAC, HVAC is only twelve years old, because I was here when they were putting it in. We all worked July fourth. And to get it put in and, you know, they were out there, Snyder's group that they'd contracted with. And so not all the HVAC is twenty five plus years old, it's just a little over twelve years. And that was two million back then.
Were you with Snyder at that time?
I had just started. That was the project, like fifteen years ago then.
Yeah.
When I first started. But on a positive note, I mean, this is, um, we believe it's a great project for the district. The district has a lot of needs. Uh, be, between your staff and our, our staff, we've identified that this would be a good start to start off with. Um, the banks, when we, when you do a project like this and we, and we submit this information of the banks, they're much more willing to lend. The, a district in, in a financial situation that you're in. The monies, because they're seeing that, hey, it's the, the savings are gonna guarantee, are gonna be guaranteed. And that the, the school's gonna have the monies at the end of the year to be able to make that note payment. So. That, that's, that's something positive to look at.
Thank y'all very much. We're sticking it out with us.
Of course.
And answering the questions and all that. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Ryan.
Item number four, consider approval to extend the contract with Southwest Food Excellence Superintendent Coles.
Thank you, President Lambert. So tonight we're bringing you uh, the contract with Southwest. Food Service Excellence during the spring of twenty twenty one, the district School Food Authority, SFA. Awarded contract number two four zero dash zero one dash two zero two one. To contract with Food Service Management Company for the management of the Child Nutrition Program. The contract was awarded for five years with annual renewals. This renewal will be the final one for that R F P. The administration started the renewal amendment process in December to submit to the Texas Department of Agriculture. For approval for an additional year. After a several month process, the T D A has approved our renewal contract. And now tonight, we are bringing it to y'all and recommending. That we extend the contract with Southwest Food Service Excellence for an additional year. Any questions?
Next year, we go to a bid for food vendors.
Yes, yes, we, we will follow the Texas. Yes, yes. We, we will follow the Texas Department of Ag's, um, formal bid process that they're very stringent on how you do it and due dates and all that. And we will, that will probably start probably in November next year.
Have y'all talked to Sapa now? Cause I know they got a grant from, uh, also the USDA for, to get local food. I know they partnered with that, uh, farm fresh paddle company where they got meat from them. Um, you talked to the other schools of what they're doing and stuff like.
I talked to a, um, local company about that and it's there's some nuances to that.
Yeah.
Um.
Like, can we partner with, you know, Uvalde Meat, put a big sign in the cafeteria and get a discount?
We can, but honestly, uh, most of our meat we get through USDA commodities. And when I visited with them, they didn't participate in, I, I didn't speak with Uvalde Meat. It was another, um, processor here in town. And we get such deals with our USDA commodities where, you know, we can send it to have hamburger made. We can send it to here or there. That at that time that I visited with them, it didn't really seem like it would work with us. But, uh, you know, we do participate with the fresh fruit and vegetable program that's going on at Dalton this year. I think we are expanding it to one campus. Next year, we wanted to, I think we're going to do it at Floris next year as well. But we will only be able to do it at Floris while they are at the current location. When they move to Legacy with it being a different campus number, then we're not allowed to do that, I think, for two years. So they do look for opportunities to have extra things for the kids.
It seems like a modest increase. I mean, breakfast goes up eight cents, lunch eight cents, which is pretty surprising with inflation.
Yeah, we get the reimbursable back, so.
Yeah.
Mr. President, I, I make the motion to extend the contract with, uh, Southwest, uh, Food Service Excellence for an additional year as presented.
I'll second.
Motion made by trustee Flores, seconded by trustee Pettis. Any further comments, questions? Seeing, hearing none, all in favor. Motion carries unanimously. Item five, closed session. A closed session will be held under the provisions of Texas Government Code, Chapter five fifty-one, Sections five fifty-one point zero seven one and five fifty-one point zero seven two. A consultation with district legal counsel regarding real property. B, discuss district owned property. And the time is seven twenty-nine. We'll go to closed session.
Okay, time is nine oh six. Return from reconvened from closed session for action relevant to items covered during closed session and other items listed. There are no items to take action on. I therefore entertain a motion for adjournment.
Mr. Board President, I make a motion that we adjourn for the evening.
Second.
Press motion made by trustee Pettis, seconded by trustee Flores. All in favor?
Me too.